Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order our regular city council meeting on Monday, March 6, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business will be our opening ceremonies, which will consist of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their life. If everyone would please rise. Thank you. Mr. Miller, if you will take role, please.
Mayor Jacob.
Here.
Mayor Protondo.
Present.
Councilmember Carefodis.
Here.
Councilmember Squires.
Show Councilmember Squires absent and excused.
Councilmember DeMichael.
Show her also absent and excused.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
You do have a quorum with seven members present?
Five members?
Five members. Thank you. Sorry. Five members present.
Okay. Item four, approval of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Earl. Discussion from table. From general public. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Okay, we have some recognitions today. I'm going to come down here. We have Lieutenant Michael Church. We have some awards for him if you'd like to come up here, sir. This is a resolution of recognition, March 6, 2023, honoring the service of Lieutenant Michael Church. Whereas, Michael Church has faithfully performed his duties as a firefighter, paramedic for the Garden City Fire Department since March thirt-- since March 30th, what year?
Ninety-eight.
Nineteen-- nineteen ninety-eight. And whereas, Mike has performed numerous roles at the Garden City Fire Department, including firefighter, paramedic, engineer, lieutenant, fire safety educator, mentor, and union executive officer. And whereas, Mike has performed his duties in the capacity of his roles with honor and distinction, saving many lives and property. And whereas, Mike is a founding member of the International Association firefighter charity golf outing for seventeen of his twenty-five years, raising thousands of dollars for several charities which supported many families. And whereas, Mike's role in the fill-the-boot MDA efforts locally raised funds towards the National MDA Campaign, giving recognition to the Garden City Fire Department nationally. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Garden City congratulates Lieutenant Michael Church on his retirement for his outstanding dedication, service, and leadership as a member of the Garden City Fire Department. Congratulations, sir.
(APPLAUSE).
Might as well stay right here. We have a representative of Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib's office, Kieta McKinney. She has something for you.
On this day, Congresswoman Tlaib would like to present you with a congressional record that will go down in history with the one hundred and eighteenth Congress on your behalf. We congratulate you on your retirement and your twenty-five years of service, and just want to say thank you for all of your service to the city of Garden City. So, we thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. (APPLAUSE). Also, we have Wayne County Commissioner David Knievel.
Thanks for dressing up, Mike. Appreciate that.[447.62][447.62](LAUGHTER). Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, appreciate it. All right. So, first things first, I've got something for Mike. I don't have anything for the folks getting promoted. I don't do promotions, no offense. I probably lost your vote. I'll take it. I want to say something real quick. In 1910, President Roosevelt was giving a speech in Paris, and he talked about what it means to be a citizen in a republic. And the speech went on to be known as his "Man in the Arena" speech. I just want to share a little excerpt really quick for you here. It says, "It's not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who know neither victory nor defeat." I chose that today because when I think of the man of the arena, Mike, I think of you, brother. From my earliest days here in Garden City, you have been a phenomenal ally, phenomenal friend, phenomenal advocate for this community. When folks were trying to come after police and fire, you were in Lansing every single day that we needed you. You were out here in the community doing the God's work on behalf of each other. So, there's no words that I could really give you to express my appreciation. I can give you this nice little piece of paper, though, and I hope it'll do you some justice. So, wish you the best on your retirement. You're too early to retire fully, so I'm sure you or the missus are trying to find something else for you to fill your time here, but--[564.04][564.04](LAUGHTER). Yeah. Whether it was in Plymouth Township at the airport or here, just top-shelf service all around, Mike. Wanted to thank you for that and wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you.[575.04][575.04](APPLAUSE).
And I did skip over our state representative, Dylan Wiegela.
You got the name right. So, we're gonna play some imagination here because me and the state senator coordinated with this. We actually got you two and narrowed it down to one, and she couldn't make it tonight. So, but I did want to come up and just say thank you as a Garden City resident. My family, being from Garden City twenty-five years, and the service you have to do, I can't imagine doing anything for twenty-five years. I have not done it yet. And I want to say, what a great time to retire because we just repealed the retirement tax. So, you did it at the right time. And thank you so much for your service.
Thank you very much.
So, I just want to say thank you. We'll get the tribute to you. So--
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you hold up the imagination.
And last but not least, we have Fire Chief Kathy Harmon.
No, I'm not gonna hit you. We-- I gave him his certificate from the department that we drew up, but his union brothers are here as well as his family, his son, who's also a Westland firefighter, found on his dad's footsteps. So, if we may, Mayor, can we go ahead and let the union bring up his recognition from the union?
I'm the representative of the IFF, our Professional Firefighters Union in Garden City here. We have a couple traditions when one member retires, just a little memento for them going out. One of them is the axe here represented with their stamp in it and engraving of his years of service with his name on it. So, the second thing we have here is a shadow box. So, this is representative of all the positions that Mike has held. As you can see, there's quite a few, and some of the other important accomplishments he's done, as I mentioned, with the MDA, with a few things along that, just representative of everything he's done at this department. So, this union, this department would be-- are gonna miss him greatly. He's a large contributor on both ends of it, so--
Too rapid. (APPLAUSE).
So--
You want to stop?
Want to say something? Yeah. I came here in nineteen ninety-eight after working a couple years at another department, and been very grateful to be employed at the city of Garden City and provide service for the residents here. Like to say thank you to the mayor, previous mayors, city managers, other council members, my chief, all my union brothers and sisters. It's been a heck of a ride, and I'm glad I did it here, so thank you very much.[872.87][872.87](APPLAUSE).
Okay, next. Next, we have some promotions in the Fire Department. Chief Harmon, if you'd like to come up.
Yeah. All right. Well, with his retirement, we had an anticipated vac-- or we didn't, we knew we had a vacancy in the lieutenant's position, so after competitive testing process, Engineer Nicholas Schroeder came in number one. You might recognize him. It was just about a month ago he was promoted to engineer. He had actually been serving in that capacity since November. We didn't get to square him in because he and his wife were expecting their twin girls, and they came. The excitement was a little bit for them, so they wanted to be here. So, Nick prepared himself by taking the necessary fire officer classes. He stepped up in an acting position, and he's completed a lot of other trainings as well. After he's sworn in, his wife Chelsea will be pinning on his badge when-- after Mr. Clerk Trezor is finished.
Wasn't too long ago we were here. Was it? All right. All right, so you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Nicholas Schroeder.
I, Nicholas Schroeder.
Having been duly appointed--
Having been duly appointed.
--to the rank of lieutenant--
To the rank of lieutenant.
--for the Garden City Fire Department--
For the Garden City Fire Department.
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear.
--to perform my duties--
To perform my duties.
--to the best of my ability--
To the best of my ability.
--to serve the citizens of Garden City--
To serve the citizens of Garden City.
--with compassion, courage, and integrity--
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
--to serve my commanding officers--
To serve my commanding officers.
--with respect and dignity--
With respect and dignity.
--and to uphold the laws and constitutions--
And to withhold the laws and constitutions.
--of the state of Michigan--
Of the state of Michigan.
--and the city of Garden City--
And the city of Garden City.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Very good. Thank you.[1033.50][1033.50](APPLAUSE). And then that is yours. Okay. And then, I know you're gonna get-- do you want just the pinning now, Zach? Right? Okay. So, you're ready to come? Then this is yours, okay? Right. And then I know that Rashida Tlaib's office also has a recommendation for you to come forward. So, you want to come up here? Right?
I speak quietly. Sorry, everyone. Okay, so again, in honor of your promotion, we are so incredibly happy to present you with a congressional record that again will be recorded in the one hundred and eighteenth Congress. We congratulate you on your promotion as lieutenant, and hope to go ahead and make you even more happier with this record here. So, thank you so much for all of your service. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you very much. (APPLAUSE).
So, with this promotion, it left an engineer's position vacant, so with that, again, we held another competitive testing process, and Patrick Renner, firefighter medic, he came out number one. He has also prepared himself for this position by taking fire pump operator courses, taking the step-up positions. He's also furthered himself in other areas as well, fire and safety and survival, rapid intervention team training, reading smoke. A lot of the times, your engineers are out there with the incident commander, so the more that they have training-wise, they may help the incident commander, almost said manager, with their handling of the fire ground scenes. Today, Patrick is with his wife and his family, and his wife Melissa will be pinning on his badge after he's sworn in.
All right. So, you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Patrick Renner--
I, Patrick Renner.
--having been duly appointed--
Having been duly appointed.
--to the rank of engineer--
To the rank engineer.
--for the Garden City Fire Department--
For the Garden City Fire Department.
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear.
--to perform my duties--
To perform my duties.
--to the best of my ability--
To the best of my ability.
--to serve the citizens of Garden City--
To serve the citizens of Garden City.
--with compassion, courage, and integrity--
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
--to serve my commanding officers--
To serve my commanding officers.
--with respect and dignity--
With respect and dignity.
--and to uphold the laws and constitutions--
And uphold the laws and constitutions.
--of the United States of America--
The United States of America.
--the state of Michigan--
The state of Michigan.
--and the city of Garden City--
The city of Garden City.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Very good. Thank you.[1264.52][1264.52](APPLAUSE). Then we've got a little-- you're gonna sign your oath. This is for me, and the next one will be for you, okay? You know, with your wife. Come on. One more. Thank you, Patrick. Okay? Are you ready for the pinning? So, come on up.[1288.41][1288.41](LAUGHTER). One more, okay? Thank you. Right? Oh, Miss can come up and help.
Okay. So, again, I just want to present congressional record on your behalf, well, I'm sorry, on behalf of the Congresswoman, to you in honor of your promotion to engineer. The Congresswoman, again, is incredibly proud of everyone here who has been promoted as well as acknowledged this evening, and unfortunately, she couldn't be here, but as this serves as a recognition of your work, again, this will go down in history with the one hundred and eighteenth Congress, and we are so incredibly happy to be able to present you with this tonight, so this is for you. No problem.[1356.91][1356.91](APPLAUSE).
Okay, this time, we'll take a short recess. I think the firefighters have some things planned. We are in recess. We are in recess. Okay, we are now back in session. Item number six is comments from state and county officials. I will call up Representative Congresswoman Talib's Associate, Kieta McKinney. Give us some updates.
Good evening, thank you so much for having me tonight. I just have some quick updates. So as you all may know, we are entering appropriation season, which means that we are going to be in communication regarding this year's earmarks and community projects funding. And so we just want to go ahead and put that on your radar, just in case you have anything that you would like to submit to our office. That's one. And then secondly, we wanted to also go ahead and provide a brief update on the Justice for All Act that was recently passed. Congresswoman Talib voted on this and it generally just basically goes ahead and supports the expansion and broadens the rights, civil rights, I'm sorry, protected classes. This also protects systems from discrimination in all aspects of life, makes our civil rights laws more inclusive, and also just provides additional support for housing and employment opportunities for all. So I did provide a brief printout for this. I'll leave this for you all at the City Hall, so you'll have access to it. And lastly, I just want to, I guess I should have did this first, I'm sorry, introduce myself again. I know a few of you I've met already a couple of weeks ago. I am the legislative caseworker for Congresswoman Talib. I will be servicing your district. And so please feel free to contact me. We're still in the process of getting cards with the new district. But please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions or comments or concerns. More than happy to support you all in that way. This also goes for the residents as well, so please don't hesitate to contact our office. Thank you.
What's the number?
Yes, so that number for our office is going to be 313-469-5500. Okay, and then we also have a couple of others. Again, I'll make sure to come back and drop off cards so that everyone has our contact information too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, we have State Representative Dylan Wiegela.
Hi, everybody. Wanted to come back again and just give you an update. I kind of figure every time we spend over a billion dollars in Lansing, you deserve to have an update as a line. So we recently passed House Bill 4016. This is a $1.3 billion supplemental budget bill. And once again, I was the only Democrat in office to vote no on the bill. What was in the bill was a combination of things, but there was, in the $1.3 billion, 830 million came from the general fund. The rest was actually ARPA funding being, basically being allocated, which would have been allocated at some point anyway. Some good stuff in there, but the reason I didn't support the piece of legislation was what was being spent from the general fund. Kind of big news was the big Ford announcement of bringing a plant to Marshall, Michigan. Couple of details surrounding that is Ford was granted a total of $1.78 billion in tax abatements, 772 million from the local community, 210 million from the SOAR fund, and then part of what we just approved in House Bill 4016 was $750 million to prepare the infrastructure of the region. All of this, and what Ford was going to do is they're going to invest $3.5 billion and create 2,500 jobs. So I'm a math person, the math on that is $680,000 a job per job in terms of the tax abatements. And that's why I voted no. Running total now for the state in terms of money we've given to corporations and what I would call handouts, what some people would call economic development, is $2.9 billion in this year and future years. That's the update with Force 4016, so that passed, that we'll see a new battery plant in Marshall, Michigan. And then we also, the House passed the 1931 abortion ban repeal. That should go to the Senate where I expect it to pass and be signed by the governor moving forward. Those are the two big updates I have this week. Any questions? And anybody who wants more information on that stuff, please check out me on social media. Just look at my name, Dylan Wiegela. I actually have started a podcast to keep people updated where I go into a little bit more detail on this stuff. So it's called My Report, M-I Report. So check it out, and I would love any feedback and any questions you have, I'm always available.
When is that podcast, Dylan?
Sorry, one more time?
When's the podcast?
It's, so it's kind of every couple of weeks when I get time to do it, but it's on, you can find it on Apple Podcasts or Spotify as well. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, community events, I have a couple of things. I'll start with the Wayne County Veteran Services Department is pleased to announce the Garden City Satellite Office. We're having a grand, they're having a grand opening this Thursday, March 9th, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. It's at the Garden City Radcliffe Community Center, 1751 Radcliffe. They say, "Hope to see you there." What this, what the Veteran Services Department does is they help Wayne County veterans with financial hardships to meet basic needs. If they're having issues with water bills, with rent, car payments, pretty much any hardship that the veterans are having, they can come to this office. They're open on Tuesday and Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. It's a lot closer than them having to go downtown, which if they're having obviously a hardship to go downtown, find parking, pay for parking, and get to their offices, it's not an easy task for them. So Wayne County has opened up the Satellite Office and they will be there to help. And the ribbon cutting again will be Thursday at 10:00 a.m. They also share, I should say, they also share that office with the American Legion, that also one day a week helps veterans from around here with paperwork and other issues that they may have. So we're trying to take care of the veterans as much as possible. Having said that, we had another power outage tonight. Every time I think we're getting ahead of it, something else goes out. If you have no power tomorrow, please call DPW at 793-1800. I will reach out to whoever I can with the state and county, as I've been doing, and try to get those houses and those neighborhoods back online as soon as possible. Hopefully, we're almost done with it. Seems like it's never ending. Our warming station, we have, the Garden City Police Station is a 24/7 warming station. We have plans, if we get a few people, or not a few, but more than is comfortable in that area, we will open up the Radcliffe Center for longer periods of time. But we've always used the police station. Right now, the Radcliffe Center is not completely staffed enough to open that every time we lose power for a warming station. We have a lot of women, we have a lot of young adults that run it. We don't have anywhere for them to sit other than right out in the middle of the hallway there. So it's not, it's not a safe situation as far as I'm concerned for some of them to be out there at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning when someone may come in from somewhere and, you know, could be trouble. Police are usually out on a call with the neighborhoods are dark. Fire department's usually down lines. And DPW, last time was they were cutting tree branches and clearing roads. So we, while we, while we opened it a couple of times for the last two storms, we had one person that spent the night and the rest of the time, we did not have anybody. So the police station is open, it is available, it's safe for everybody. So that is our plan that we have gone for that. And one last thing for community events is Wayne County officially voted to give us $4 million in ARPA funds. It was submitted about 18 months, two years ago. Former Mayor Walker, Mr. Dockerty, Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson, they submitted a plan to, to the commissioners to upgrade Radcliffe. It started as an upgrade to Maplewood, but when we got Radcliffe, the county thought it'd probably be better to upgrade Radcliffe. So I went down Wednesday, gave them a present, short presentation, just to update what we had. And Wayne County voted Thursday to award us $4 million for that. With that, that's all I have on community events. Today, we have no public hearings. Item 11 is the consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Earl.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items 1 through 5.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Witt. Discussion from table.
Mayor.
Councilmember Carafotas.
Is this one we have questions about all of this, or is it in the action items?
This is for the consent agenda.
Just the, okay, that's it.
From general public, Mr. Muller.
No surprise, I'm sure, but you voted to accept the agreement between the library and the council at the closed meeting.
This is just about the consent agenda right now.
This is on your library.
Not on the consent agenda.
The meeting is on here. The minutes for the meeting is on there, and I looked at them online. It mentions nothing about what kind of settlement it was, how much money was involved, or nothing. I asked that before, I was told basically, "You can't tell me," the lawyer. So I'm asking again, what was the agreement?
It's not for discussion, but I will, I will answer it. Again, it's, until it becomes accepted, it's still in litigation. So just because we agreed to it, doesn't mean the libraries agreed to it, which means this, it's still an open case. So soon as, if they agree to it, it'll be all out in the open. That's because you elected us to do things like that, and then if you don't like what we agreed to, you know, your choice is not to elect us next time. But for right now, it's still, it's still in litigation.
But you've already agreed to it, and we don't.
But the library, I'm not going, it's not for debate, but the library has it, so it's not a settled case. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, action items, item number one. Fiscal year 2023-24, five-year capital improvement plan. This is a call for a public hearing.
Mayor.
Councilmember Earl.
I move to consider a proposed five-year capital improvement plan, CIP, and to call for a public hearing for Monday, April 3rd, 2023, at 7:00 p.m.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Witt. Any other discussion from table? From general public. Well, there is no, actually, I'm sorry, there is none by the public because it's a public hearing. You'll have your say there. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item 2, drinking water state revolving fund draft project plan. That's also a call for a public hearing.
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Dole.
I propose to call a public hearing for Monday, March 20th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. to hear public comment regarding presented drinking water system improvements.
Support from Councilmember Carafotas. Discussion from table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item 3, fire department renovations contract, Mr. Dockerty.
Thank you, Mayor. Not too long ago, if the council may recall, we had one bidder for this project, came in about $1.6 million. Staff working with Hennessy, our engineers, Alan Cruz and Ray Parker. We were discussing it, thinking that was way overpriced from what we expected it to be, and being only one bidder would not be a good decision for the council to go in that direction. So we put it back out to bid, we received numerous bids at this point, to, for, six, six companies. And the lowest bidder at this point is key construction for $985,000. So we went from $1.6 million down to about $1 million, it was a good decision to hold off. So at this point in front of you is the request to go with the lowest bidder on this project for key construction for the expansion of the current fire station.
Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Carafotas.
Questions before or after a motion?
After.
We'll need a motion in a second for discussion.
All right.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I move to award a contract for fire department renovations to Key Construction Group LLC of Dearborn, Michigan in an amount not to exceed $985,210 in accordance with bid submitted February 1st, 2023.
Support from anybody?
Support.
Support, Councilmember Earl. Discussion from table.
Mayor.
Councilmember Carafotas.
I just have a couple of questions. So we're looking at key construction and then the, their bid includes 10 things that they didn't quote that they would be doing, like the trusses, the sheathing, the gypsy board, the boiler, the electric. So if you go to the second bid, which is DMC Consulting, who quoted to do all those things? If you take those 10 items off, their bid is only 15,000 different than key construction. It takes off $400,000. So my question is, I'm sure you have the answer, we would have to bid out all those 10 things with someone else?
No, their bid price, those items are included in other sections. The sheathing's included with the trust prices, so they lumped some things together and didn't break it down completely.
Okay, perfect.
This is Mr. Ray Parker, one of the engineers from Hennessy Engineer.
Okay, good.
Any other questions?
I asked that same question, Councilwoman, I saw that also.
Yeah, we just want to make sure we're getting everything correct.
Okay, any other discussion from the general public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item 4, DPW yard paving, Mr. Omen, DPW Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In an effort to upgrade our DPW facility, we would like to repave a portion of the DPW yard. On the screen is a picture of this proposed area. It's a 50,000 square foot area on the sides and the back of the building. Part of the area was once paved with asphalt in 2000 by the DPW, and part of it has always been gravel. The asphalt is pretty much faded, reduced to potholes and gravel, and this is what it looks like today. We would like to repave the yard in eight-inch concrete, make storm sewer repairs, which will last long into the future. We did receive 21 bids for this project. GV Cement was the lowest responsible bidder. GV has done multiple projects for us in the past, and we've always been happy with their work.
And the money is coming from Act 51, right?
Local major roads and water and sewer.
Motion is in order. Mayor Protem Dole.
I motion to approve the contract for DPW yard paving with GV Cement Contracting from Brownstown Township, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $475,542. And to approve the contract with Hennessy Engineers of Southgate, Michigan, for construction services in an amount not to exceed $26,156. And the Butchelli Group of Livonia, Michigan, for construction management and inspection fees in an amount not to exceed $32,600 for a combined total for this project of $535,298.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Carafotas. I will say this for the discussion, those pictures actually make that road look better than what it is if you walk it. It is absolutely terrible back there, so it's long overdue. Any other discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
Does that also include lifting up the shipping crate and getting cement under where the shipping crate is that you guys have back there for the police?
Yeah, that'll, that'll be paved, we'll have to move it, so it will be paved.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was going to get paved, so it's not just continually sinking. Awesome.
Okay, any discussion from general public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item 5, roadway pavement marking project.
Thank you, Mayor. This project consists of painting, pavement markings in various locations throughout the city, streets and intersections. There's a map on the screen showing the proposed areas, which include crosswalks, crosswalks with left turn lanes, and a double yellow center line on several streets as a traffic calming measure to slow traffic down. PK Contracting was the low bidder of this project. They are one of the few qualified contractors to perform M. Dotton County Road pavement markings. They are also preferred subcontractor to many road paving contractors. The DPW will install any required signage in these areas also.
Okay. Any, motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I move to approve the contract for the roadway pavement marking project with PK Contracting LLC of Troy, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $236,430.
Support.
Support, Councilmember Earl, discussion from table.
Yes, I do have a question.
Councilmember Witt.
I know I spoke with you already about it, just so everybody else knows, the double yellow lines on some of the side streets.
Yes.
So it's supposed to help narrow the lane down so people don't speed down them. So like Hubbard, I know we had a couple residents at earlier meetings before I was on council, bringing that up. So I do appreciate the answers that you guys both gave me for that. My other question is, I just want to make sure the markings are going to be done with paint and not stickers.
Correct.
That is, okay. That is all that I have.
Okay, thank you.
So the double yellow line is supposed to slow traffic down on Henry Ruff where we had problems?
Yes, according to Police Chief Gibbons, he, he said that the double yellow line, I guess it's an optical thing, it would make the road appear less wide so that it gives the impression it's a smaller road and will slow traffic down. Any other questions?
Mayor, I would just add to that, it, painting on the road does, it grabs people's attention, and it does work. And, you know, we have had several complaints about speeding in some of these areas, so I'm glad to see that we're taking these steps, along with the other steps we've been taking to try to curb that.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion from general public. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Item six, parking lot seal coating and striping. Mr. Omen.
Yes, Mayor. This project consists of crack sealing, seal coating, and restriping six city-owned parking lots. There should be a map on the screen. They are located at the Maplewood Center, Moller Field, Rotary Park, City Hall, the Civic Arena, and behind the businesses on the northeast corner of Ford and Middlebelt. This is a preventive maintenance measure that will extend the service life for these parking lots. We did receive seven bids for this project. Wolverine Seal Coating of Jackson, Michigan, was the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay. Motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Earl.
I move to approve contract for parking lot seal coating and stripping with the Wolverine Seal Coating of Jackson, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $52,595.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Karafodis. Discussion from table. From the general public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Item seven, 2023 Sidewalk Program Design Stage Services.
Yes, Mayor. We would like to have another sidewalk program this year. The area for this year program is now on the screen. It is Ford Road to Cherry Hill, Maryman to Middlebelt. We like to do this big of area to stay in our citywide six-year rotation that we are trying to establish. This program will address trip hazards greater than one inch. This is to approve the contract with the Bucelli Group for the design stage services for the program. The work involved will be sidewalk field evaluation, project administration, and inspection services. The Bucelli Group has managed this program for the last two years.
Okay. And this isn't the sidewalk gap program, this is just for trip hazards?
Yeah, correct.
Motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I move to approve the contract for the 2023 Sidewalk Program Design Stage Services with the Bucelli Group of Livonia, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $104,020.
Support.
Support from Mayor Protem Dole. Further discussion from table. From general public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Item eight, 2023 Sidewalk Program Contract Amendment with JB Contractors.
Yes, Mayor. JB Contractors is entering the second year of a two-year contract for our sidewalk program. Due to the increase in concrete and fuel surcharges we've seen over the past year, they have requested a 5% to 6% increase in their unit pricing. Even with these slight increases, they remain lower in their unit prices than the other eight contractors that bitted on this project last year. The changes in unit pricing will increase the amount for a standard four-inch flag of walk by $8.35, and $12.55 for a six-inch flag. JB Contractors did an excellent job for us last year, and I would recommend improving these slight increases versus rebidding this project.
Okay. Thank you. Motion?
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Dole.
I propose to approve the contract amendment for the 2023 Sidewalk Program to reflect the 5% to 6% increase in unit pricing with JB Contractors of Detroit, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $210,331. Support.
Support from Councilmember Witt. Any further discussion from the table?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is it very common for something that's already been bid, for them to come back the next year and say, "We need an increase"?
I haven't seen it before, but...
I'd agree. I haven't seen it before either. We just know the world's gone crazy this past year, and it's one of those, as Brad mentioned, we can drop them, we can sue them, spend money, we can bid it out, it'll come back a lot higher. So, as staff talked about, it was one of the least of the evils, is probably just go with the extension, and understand that we keep an open eye for the future.
I get it, but they're getting the bid because they're the lowest bidder, and then after they get the contract, they're raising the price, so I'm just curious.
Just the second year, though, it wasn't the first year initially.
I know moving forward, we'll just take one-year contracts at a time.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, this is the last year in their contract?
Correct. Yep.
Further discussion from the general public. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Thank you. Item 12, other business, none, public comment. You'll, this is your chance for non-agenda items, three-minute time limit, and not a time for discussion. Anybody from the general public? Mr. Jones.
Probably Mayor Protem Dole would have mentioned this if I didn't get there first, but on this Saturday, Garden City Kiwanis, in conjunction with our high school program, the Key Club, will be packaging up 3,000?
No, it's actually a little over 10,000 meals.
Little over 10,000 meals in the Kids Against Hunger program. We can use all the volunteer help that shows up. I think we're going to have support from the Key Club, from the National Honor Society, from some scouting groups, as well as the Kiwanis, and anybody else that wants to participate in that should show up at 11 o'clock for the packaging.
9:30.
9:30 for the packaging?
I believe it's 9:30.
Okay. 9:30 for the packaging.
Don't quote me on that.
So, we appreciate you.
Check out our Facebook page. The information's there.
Yeah. Well, I don't do Facebook, so I couldn't tell you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Mullner.
I just want to thank the police and fire department for coming over by the house the other day, for taking care of that, I don't know what he was, anyway, he was laying over there by the pole, sleeping, passed out, just come from the hospital. The police come first, they were very good, talking to him, got him up and stuff, then the fire truck come. I think maybe they were at the hospital or something, they stopped to help. This guy's from the fire department, went to the hospital, got a wheelchair on foot, wheeled the wheelchair all the way back down to the guy, got him, finally got him up, put him in the wheelchair, wheeled him all the way to the hospital, way beyond what they should have had to do. And I just think people ought to realize that. Unfortunately, by the afternoon, the guy was back laying by the pole again, but at least this time he got up and left. Only done.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Ryan Razor, I live on Donnelly Street in Garden City. I don't know if anybody's familiar or not, but there's a 45-speed limit sign going eastbound, like where Kentucky Fried Chicken is, right in that area, you know where I'm talking?
By Speedway? No.
No, we're down by the, across from the cemetery.
By the junior high?
Oh, that one.
I'm sorry.
And then you go up to the bar, and now it's 40. If I'm doing 40, I've got people screaming at me, it's 45. I just talked to the guy from the county, because I was told before, that's who you got to get with, so I'm just giving you guys a heads up, I'll be getting with them, because we've had picking bullets up right by belt tire. I don't want to be one of the guys getting shot doing 40.
I don't blame you. You were talking to the right guy, though. Anybody else? Okay. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing, GCU, Wednesday night, we thought it might be coming to an end, the first three classes, we had about 24 to 27 people. Last fall, we only had 11, so we thought maybe we're coming down to the climax, and we're at 25 so far for Wednesday. We could do a couple more if anybody calls in, so that's a good positive thing, that more people are interested in learning more about our city government, so just mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, Mr. Miller.
I have nothing, Mr. Miller. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Witt.
Just a congrats on the retirement to Lieutenant Church, and congrats on the promotions to Nick Schroder and Patrick Renner, and that is all that I have tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Dole.
Oh, I have a few things. First, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, you were correct, it is 11:00 AM this Saturday at the high school in the cafeteria.
I looked it up.
I, however, will be there by 9:30. To mimic Councilperson Witt, I also want to congratulate Lieutenant Church and new engineer Schroder and firefighter engineer Renner. Congratulations to all of them. I want to thank all of our residents and the city, the police department, the fire department, everybody, for all of their efforts for the past week and a half with everything the city's gone through, no different than other cities, losing power, et cetera, but a lot of neighbors pitching in, and just doing what we could to help, and that's what Garden City does, so that was good to see. We do, speaking of Kiwanis, though, we do have another thing coming up. If no one's ever been there, it's the Great Pig Race, that'll be on April 15th.
Somebody was just asking about that.
So, lots of fun over at St. Thomas the Apostle, again on April 15th. It is a 21-and-over event. And the other thing is, the Garden City Palm is hosting a variety show on March 15th at 6:00 PM at the Garden City High School Auditorium, so that'll be kind of, kind of fun, see them perform.
Pig race is always fun.
The pig race is a riot, so if you've never been, make sure you get your tickets and attend, and they're not live pigs, just so everybody knows. They're not live pigs. I know, they do race pigs, but these are not live, so. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Karafodis.
I just have a couple of things. One, I would like to remind all our residents that if they have a problem with the roads, the ditches, their neighbor, whatever they have a problem with, they should reach out to council, or to our city manager, or to our mayor, because we don't know about things unless we, unless you tell us about them. So, putting it on Facebook before you call the city is not a way to get our attention, but calling the city manager or reaching out to anybody on council is a way to get things solved, so please do that. We're here to help you. The other thing I wanted to mention was that this is kids read, it's, March is reading month, and we have the 10th Annual Kids Read to Dogs Event. It's at Lucky Dog Two, and it is Sunday, March 26th, from 12:00 to 3:00. You can bring your children, and we have an array of different therapy dogs that they can read to. So, if you have kids that like dogs, or kids that have trouble reading, dogs make a really good reading partner, so you can always give us a call and register your child for it, and we will get them in there. It's lots of fun. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Earl.
Thank you, Mayor. Few things tonight. First off, for our promotions, Lieutenant Schroder and engineer Renner, congratulations. Thank you for continuing to serve our community. For Lieutenant Church, thank you so much for protecting our community, for all the years of service you gave us. You know, police and fire like to take shots at each other jokingly, but, you know, those guys earn their money. They put their lives on the line every day, and so thank you very much, and enjoy your retirement. Everybody that knows Lori at the sports venue knows that one of her passions is poet, so they're doing a comfort to a dog in need. It's for blankets, towels, comforters. It should be up on the screen. March 5th till April 30th, you can drop any of that off, it's sports venue during regular business hours. Anything you can drop off would be greatly appreciated. What that place does for the community is beyond amazing, and so, and I know this community is a community that steps up and helps out, so I'm sure they're going to get a lot. Last, I want to thank our DPW, our police, our fire, the mayor, the city manager, the other council members. You know, we had a state representative, a state senator, everybody was helping out, pitching in to try to get the power back on. It was really frustrating situation, back-to-back weekends, that's not the back-to-back that you want. I do want to say, it was great to see the citizens, you know, this guy got his power back on, so he took a generator over to this person, so they could get some power, so there was a lot of that going on. And I do want to point out, I'm frustrated with DTE to that aspect. It just seemed like this time, there was not the updates that we needed from them. You know, it seems like their infrastructure is in dire need of repair, and, you know, it's easy to have an infrastructure that needs help, needs help, needs help, and then the power goes out, and then when they get it all back on, they're the heroes. Well, they're, you know, the citizens and the people that worked for our city that were pitching in and helping out, they were heroes, too. You know, they did a lot to make sure everybody was safe, and so I greatly appreciate that. I hope we see some kind of fixes in the system, and hopefully we don't have to go through that anymore. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to just follow up on that, so everybody knows, Mayor Jacobs is taking this on personally, to try to figure out how to get everybody's power back on. Walks in the office tonight saying he was down to the last couple, and he just heard tonight there's more back out again, and the frustration just grows in him, so just appreciate you for what you're doing to help the community, and it's a never-ending gig to try to get all the power turned on. So, I just want to make a point that most people don't know, you're personally taking charge of the situation, as much as we can, not being in charge of DTE.
Thank you. Yeah. We don't have control over DTE, which can get frustrating. As Mr. Dockerty said, I want to thank Senator Polhankey and her staff. I got to know them really well over the past week and a half. Commissioner Kanesek helped, but Senator Polhankey really, really helped. I was calling her office four or five times a day, and she would call DTE, and she had a little, obviously, a little more pull than I did, but she was amazing, she took every one of my calls, answered any texts, emails, same with her staff. They were really good, and we wouldn't have gotten the power on that we did get on without her. And again, Commissioner Kanesek helped with getting Wayne County to give us a generator for Ford and Middlebelt, starting Friday. We went and set that up to get that light on at Ford and Middlebelt. It's a very dangerous intersection to begin with, and when there's no lights, it's even worse. So, those guys did just an awesome job, and hopefully we're getting to the end of it. Spring will come, and hopefully they'll work on their infrastructure like Councilmember Earl said. They keep saying they will, we'll see. I want to congratulate all the firefighters, Lieutenant Church on his retirement, well-deserved, fire engineer or lieutenant Schroder, and engineer Patrick Renner. Congratulations, and like Mr. Mullner said, they, all our employees usually go above and beyond what they need to do, and that's, that was apparent in that situation and during this power outage. And now, some kind of good news. We've got, or more good news after that, our hockey game that we put on, versus West, Garden City versus Westland Police versus Police. It was a packed house at Garden City Arena. It was a great event, it was to benefit Detective Sergeant Kichar, who was injured in line of duty. There were a lot of events, a lot of fun, a couple... There were a lot of events, a lot of fun, a couple of wagers between Garden City and Westland, and if you have a chance, you can watch the Westland Council meeting when they come on, and I believe Mayor Landau will be wearing a really nice uniform at some point during that event. So we did win, Garden City won 11 to 7, so we raised approximately $6,700 for Detective Sergeant. So it was a packed house, a lot of fun, kids had skated in intermission, everybody had a good time, so I want to thank everybody that came out, everybody that donated, it was awesome. Having said all that, oh, one last thing. I was informed that Councilmember Melissa DeMichael has resigned her position, so we will be reaching out to someone to fill that position, and hopefully we'll have that for next council meeting. Having said that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for going above.